Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the October 1st, 2013 meeting of Glendale City Council being called ordered at 6:02 PM. May we have a roll call?
Council members Friedman.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Sananian.
Here.
Mayor Weaver.
Here. The pledge of allegiance tonight will be led by Councilmember Quintero invocation by Sarkis Karimian, chaplain of the Glendale Memorial Hospital.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation.
Let us pray. Almighty God, we thank you for blessing us with this opportunity once again to gather this evening, and we thank you for the privilege of being public servants and citizens of our great republic and of our great city of Glendale. And Lord, we ask for your grace, your wisdom, your guidance, and your strength for our leaders, both at the local level, at the state level, and the national level. And we also ask for your continued protection, blessing, and strength for our public servants and those who put their lives on the line to protect and to serve. And we ask that you would guide the decisions that will be made today, this evening, and that they would be for the best, for the betterment of our society, and for the good of our citizens. And we ask all this in your holy name. Amen.
Okay. May we have your report?
The agenda for the October 1st, 2013 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council is posted on Thursday, September 26, 2013, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. Before we do anything else, for those that are here for item 9A, the appeal is being pulled for two weeks. We've been inundated with materials in the last few days. The last report ended up on my desk 15 minutes ago. It's a nice, thick packet from a legal firm challenging the city and on the advice of legal counsel. Mr. Garcia, who's out of town and is here, we're going to pull it for two weeks, date certain. Is that true? Anything else to add?
Mr. Mayor, I would ask that we continue it. We have entertained a motion to continue it to a date certain, and the suggested date is two weeks from now, on October 15th.
So moved. Your second?
Second.
Roll call.
Council members Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Sananian.
Yes.
Hi. Does the applicant understand what we're doing? Applicant isn't here yet?
We talked to the applicant.
Oh, the applicant, not the appellant, not the appellant. The applicant.
Mr. Mayor, I did make contact with them to advise what was going to happen based on the information received. They are aware.
Okay, good. Okay, we'll go with whatever's next. Oh, agenda preview, and Jasmine Bear, who has a birthday today and will be very happy to have a shorter meeting, so she went with her family for dinner. So, come with the agenda.
Yes, sir. For the October 8th agenda preview, for the Glendale Housing Authority, we have no business agenda items. For a special meeting to commence at 3:00 PM for the Glendale Successor Agency, we have two items. Director of Economic Development, this is regarding agency contracts for financial, legal, and farmers market services. Director of Economic Development, this is a final bond refunding, and it's for approvals that afternoon. We also have another special meeting that afternoon of the city council, and we have three items. Public hearing, Director of Community Development, proposed ordinance amending titles 5 and 8 of the GMC 1995, and its establishing of smoking permitted area license. Director of Community Development, proposed mixed-use project containing 532 live-work units with two residential lobbies, paseos, and a bank, and this is to be located at 201 West Lexington Drive and 418 North Central Avenue. And lastly, that afternoon, city attorney discussion of city options related to the 12 Oaks closure and displacement of elderly residents. That evening for the city council meeting to commence at 6:00 PM, we have a number of consent items. Director of Community Development and Community Services and Parks, and Public Works, Pacific Auditorium Exterior Painting Project, and this is in connection with spec. number 3523. Director of Public Works, amendment to the quitclaim deed of electric easements to Broadstone Glendale, which is at 546 West Colorado Street, and this was filed on June 18th of 2013. Director of Public Works, property management agreement with Modern Parking, Inc., and this is for the maintenance and operation of four of our city facilities and the Larry Zarian Transportation Center. Under adoption of ordinances, we have ordinance amending existing lease agreement with new singular wireless for city-owned property located at Fern Lane and Passa Glen Drive, which is near the Glendale Sports Complex. And lastly, under action items, Director of Community Services and Parks, and this is a status of Stengel Field Stadium. And that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And what is next?
Readee is the proclamation designating the month of October 2013 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
To whom? Denise and company. Let me read the proclamation first. Whereas domestic violence is a serious crime that affects people of all races, ages, gender, and income levels, and whereas domestic violence is widespread and affects over 4 million Americans each year, and whereas one in four women will experience domestic violence in her lifetime, and whereas children that grow up in violent homes are believed to be abused and neglected at a rate higher than the national average, and whereas boys who witness domestic violence are twice as likely to abuse their own partners and children when they become adults, and whereas domestic violence costs the nation billions of dollars annually in medical expenses, police and court costs, shelters, foster care, sick leave, and inflicts untold emotional trauma to the entire family, and whereas Domestic Violence Awareness Month provides an excellent opportunity for citizens to learn more about preventing domestic violence and show support for the numerous organizations and individuals who provide critical advocacy, services, and assistance to victims. Now, therefore, I, Dave Weaver, Mayor of the City of Glendale, proclaim the month of October 2013 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month and urge citizens of Glendale to work together to eliminate domestic violence from our community. Again, I'll have Ms. Friedman do the honors.
We have members of our Commission on the Status of Women here, and I hope that everybody introduces yourselves, and thank you so much for all the work that you're doing to bring this issue forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And now, ready it Denise.
Good evening, City Council, Mayor, and staff. My name is Denise Miller, and I'm the Chair on the Commission on the Status of Women. Beside me, I have Commissioner Kajoyan, and I have Commissioner Sharon Weissman. I also have with us our student ex officios, Rima Sahakian and Evelina Merzakian. Together, along with Vice Chair Linda Burns and Commissioner Devine and our city staff, we thank you for this proclamation. The Glendale Commission on the Status of Women this month is presenting its eighth annual Domestic Violence Awareness Month. The CSW is partnering with local organizations to bring two significant anti-violence events to raise awareness and promote prevention efforts in the Glendale community. As you already stated, Mayor, one in every four women will experience domestic violence in their lifetime. To that end, the CSW and the YWCA of Glendale are partnering to present our annual candlelight vigil on Thursday, October 17th, from 6:00 to 7:00 PM. The candlelight vigil is held in memory of victims of domestic violence, both survivors and those who have lost their lives. The vigil will also provide an opportunity for awareness, education, and outreach. Speakers at the vigil will include victims of domestic violence, clergy members from the community, and representatives from CSW, YWCA, and the Glendale Police Department. Further and later in that month, we are continuing our awareness campaign with what we are calling the Purple Ribbon Event. The CSW is partnering with various organizations like the Glendale YWCA, Massage MV, Armenian Relief Society, the Seroptimus International Glendale, and Dative Outreach to raise awareness and educate the community. These two locations will be the Montrose Harvest Market and Massage MV, right in front of Massage MV Glendale on Brand Boulevard. This will take place on Sunday, October 20th, from 9:00 to 2:00 PM. We will all be at all of these locations, and we will be passing out ribbons to raise awareness. Lastly, the commission would like to present city council and staff with a pin. All of you have them at your, at the dais, and what this pin is, it is a replica of the chief's badge, our police chief, and it includes a purple bow to symbolize our partnership with the police and the community to raise awareness about domestic violence. Every year, the commission raises money to provide the GPD with funds for emergency housing for victims of domestic violence. We thank Police Chief Ron DePampa, Sergeant Tom Lorenz, and Captain Todd Stokes for donating this pin to our commission. We would ask that you may wear this pin throughout the month of October and present a unified front with the rest of us against domestic violence. And with that, again, and on behalf of the entire commission who is present and not, we would like to thank you for supporting the Commission on the Status of Women.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the pins. Okay, next, please.
Readee is the proclamation designating the month of October 2013 as October International Walk to School Month.
Well, I recognize somebody.
Hello.
You coming again this year?
Yes, I will be.
One of my rolls float workers. Okay, don't read yet, I gotta read the proclamation, okay? Whereas hundreds of children could be saved each year if communities take steps to make pedestrian safety a priority, and whereas a lack of physical activity plays a leading role in rising rates of obesity, diabetes, and other health problems among children, and being able to walk or bicycle to school offers an opportunity to build activity into daily routine, and whereas driving students to school by private vehicle contributes to traffic congestion and air pollution, and whereas an important role for parents, caregivers, and communities is to teach children about pedestrian safety, about the health and environmental risks related to physical inactivity and air pollution, and become aware of the difficulties and dangers that children face on their trip to school each day. Whereas parents, educators, community members, and leaders can support Safe Routes to School programs, which enable children to safely walk and bicycle in our communities, and whereas children, parents, and community leaders around the world are joining together to walk to school and evaluate walking and bicycling conditions in their communities. Now, therefore, I, Dave Weaver, Mayor of the City of Glendale, proclaim the month of October 2013 as October International Walk to School Month, and encourage everyone to consider the safety and health of children this month and throughout the year. Just one more. Let me give this to you.
I'm still. Good to.
We have a beautiful float this year.
I can't even start working on it. Okay, I'll be there. Okay, I'm sorry. Good evening, Mr. Mayor Weaver, members of the council, and city staff. I'm honored, my name is Jasmine Syed, and I'm a senior at Glendale High School and a member of the GUSD Student Advisory Committee. I am honored to accept this International Walk to School Month proclamation on behalf of the children and residents of the City of Glendale. This is Glendale's fifth year participating in this annual event, and it is supported by the city's Safe Routes to School Program, the Glendale Council PTA, GUSD, and Walk Bike Glendale. Each year, the event gets bigger and bigger, with 34 schools participating this year. This annual event encourages students and families to commit to a healthy lifestyle by walking to school every day. It also raises awareness about the importance of both pedestrian and driver's safety. Some examples of the activities that will occur on October 9th are students, parents, teachers, and community volunteers will meet at parks and walk in groups to school. Many have organized walking school buses. The Glendale Fire Department will be cheering on the students, and the Glendale Police Department K-9 Police Dogs will walk with the students at John Marshall and Cerritos Elementary Schools. There'll be lots of fresh air and smiling faces all over Glendale and La Cucanta. If you haven't committed to come out and walk with us yet, it's not too late. Wednesday, October 9th, come walk to school with the children of Glendale, and we'd love to have you there, Mr. Weaver. Thank you.
I bet you would. Thank you very much. Maybe you'll hit a bigger record this year. Okay, next, please.
Readee is presentation of star graduates from Hoover High School, Alejandra Vargas and Maribel Rivera.
Okay, following this, we'll have one special presentation. Can I have two? Want me to read first, or you talk first?
Whatever you'd like, sir.
I'll read. The same thing to Maribel Rivera and Alejandra Vargas from that other high school. I went to Glendale High, sorry. Congratulations on your graduation from the Students Training as Role Models Star Youth Program. Your five-year involvement is a testament to your values and commitment in achieving your goals. I applaud your efforts and wish you continued success in life. And Mr. Quintero, if you would. And then you can talk.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members, city manager, and other city representatives. My name is Officer Aguila, and I, along with my partner, Officer Jackson, and oftentimes Officer Alex Zee, run the STAR program. STAR is an acronym for Students Training as Role Models. It is a program run every Tuesday, and we have an outing once a month. This program is very special and dear to our hearts. We also partner along with parks, and we meet at Pacific Community Center, like I said, once a week, and these two girls are a true testament of dedication to the program. It's not easy to be part of a program for one or two years, let alone five years, and they've been able to do this. I'll give you a brief synopsis about Alejandra Vargas, who stands to my left, your right. Alejandra began participating in the STAR program at the age of eight years old while she attended Edison Elementary School. During her time at STAR, Alejandra has been able to maintain a 2.0 GPA or better. Alejandra enjoys reading and listening to music, as well as being part of the Spanish Club at Hoover High School. She recently became a freshman at Hoover High School, where she plans on taking the necessary courses to eventually attend CSUN and major in criminal justice. Alejandra will be greatly missed in the STAR program, but we believe she'll go on to accomplish great goals in her life.
And my name is Officer Jackson, and I would like to say a few words about Maribel. She has been with the program for about four years. She started October 2009, and while during her time in the program, she's been able to maintain a 2.0 or better also. Maribel enjoys playing soccer. She is very active and loves playing sports. Some of the things that I would personally like to say about Maribel that I've noticed is she's always very respectful to everybody, she's very friendly with her peers, and she's very competitive when it comes to things that she loves to do. I look forward to seeing her. I'm also an SRO at Hoover High School, so I'm lucky that I get to see both of them. They're both freshmen there, and I will continue to see them for the next, the next four years, so I will keep an eye on them, but I have no doubt that they are going to be great students. They will be active, and they will do excellent, and I'm, I've been honored to have them in the program.
Congratulations. Don't take anything wrong about me talking about Hoover, and I'm Glendale. Hoover's a great school, too. You'll enjoy your four years there. Say anything?
I'd like to say how, how proud I am, not only of the students, but their families and the officers. This organization or this program has been around for many, many years, and these are younger students, but in fact, we've got great testimonials of all the kids that have gone through the program, that have gone on to college and so many other productive things. So, the police department does a wonderful job, along with the parents and the students, always, you know, maintaining this high quality, and thanks for your hard work and all your achievements.
And it's a program the council keeps funded, because it's so good. So, would you like to say anything quick? Quick?
Good evening, Mayor, city council members, city manager, and other city representatives. My name is Maribel Rivera, and this is Alejandra Cárdenas. As you may know, we are graduating the STAR Youth Program. Alejandra.
Thank you, Maribel. We just wanted to say thank you to the STAR Youth Program, especially the adults, Officer Jackson, Officer Aguila, Officer Zee, Norma, Erin, and Dorothy. They've been a great influence on both of us, and they've been example of what true model should be. We appreciate everything that they've done for us, and they've treated us like their own children these past years that they've known us. This program has given us many opportunities to be the best person that we can be. Unfortunately, one of the officers couldn't make it tonight. Officer Shine, if you're watching us, we love you a lot, we miss you, and we hope to see you soon.
To you, sunshine.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. There's one announcement, I'll put it in at this point, and nobody will stop. Kids, wait, just wait a minute, just hang on. This next person coming in individual, nobody will object to a person, the thing coming in. Nobody will object. There she is.
Is that a cat in her mouth, Luna?
That's.
That's one of our canines.
Well, good evening, everybody. Hello, Mayor, everybody. I'd like to welcome you and everybody at home to our fifth annual Glendale Canines in the Park event. That's going to be October 12th, from 11:00 AM to 4:00 PM at Verdugo Park. And if some of you aren't familiar with what this event is, it's our large annual fundraiser that we have all kinds of fun events for pets and children as well. So, it's a pet-friendly event. You could bring your dogs. We'll have live police canine demonstrations, low-cost pet vaccinations. So, if your dogs are due vaccinations, bring them in, we have low-cost pet vaccinations. If you're looking for a dog, there's pet adoption fairs, as well as other rescue organizations that'll be there. Lot of fun events for the kids, face painting, rock wall climbing, bouncers, food, music, lot of good booths to browse around. You could take pictures with the police canines as well. So, please, come join us, October 12th, from 11:00 AM to 4:00 PM at Verdugo Park.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice seeing you again. She was over at the Rose Bowl on Saturday with the other canines for Pasadena Humane Society, walking around, about 1,000 dogs walking around the Rose Bowl. Okay, kids, now you can leave. Have a good evening. Do your homework. Getting all smiles for that statement. Okay, now what's next?
Next item on the agenda, city council or staff comments.
Ms. Friedman.
Last Tuesday, Mr. Quintero and myself, who are not here, we were in San Jose at a conference for the Burbank Pasadena Glendale Bob Hope Airport on behalf of Glendale, and I just wanted to report back that I found, and I'm sure Mr. Quintero would agree, very valuable, not only did I learn a lot about airports, and being a new airport commissioner, that's a great thing, but I learned a lot of things that were applicable to the City of Glendale as well. I'm going to seminars on things like risk management and public process, so I just wanted to let the public know where we were. This last weekend was a very large festival for Korean-Americans in Los Angeles, and as part of that, we were visited in Glendale by not just one, but two governors from Korea. Governor Hong Jun Po and Governor Moon Su Kim, and actually, we have a Governor Moon Su Kim Day in the city. They came to pay their respects to the Comfort Woman Memorial, and there's a lot of press here and a lot of interest, and if you've been in the Central Park recently, you may have seen several wreaths on that memorial from various Korean-Americans and also Koreans visiting from Korea. So, I wanted to thank them for making the trip all the way from Korea and thinking to come to Glendale. It was a great honor for our city. On Sunday, I was able to attend a fundraiser for the Glendale Humane Society, which is a wonderful shelter that we have in Glendale. It's a no-kill shelter. It's volunteer-run. They seem to have a lot of people there, so I hope they raised a lot of money. If you're looking for a pet, Glendale Humane Society is definitely the place to go, and I wanted to congratulate them for a, for a very successful event. I think that's all I have. It is. Thank you very much.
Anybody else?
Yes, I was at the conference in beautiful downtown San Jose.
I bet.
California, which has actually come a long way. They have light rail lines there, and, but the conference is excellent. And for those of you that don't know, the Bob Hope Airport is currently working with the residents of Burbank, with the Burbank City Council, to see what we can do about a, if possible, a replacement terminal and other issues that pertain to the airport. Probably by the end of this month, we'll actually have a more in-depth report by the executive director of the airport and the current president, who is a Burbank resident. Then, I also attended a fantastic celebration, is the best way to describe it, at Two Strike Park, the Veterans Memorial, that the entire Chrysena Valley community worked on for so many years, along with the American Legion and the VFW, was commemorated, and it was kind of interesting. On the way up, I was thinking, wow, I hope we, we have a nice turnout, I hope people show up for this, it's so important, all of the veterans that gave their lives from the Chrysena Valley and basically also Glendale. Well, it was packed. I mean, there were just hundreds of people there, very, a very significant tribute to those veterans, older vets from the Second World War, as well as, as recent, a young man gave his life a few years ago. Then, as Ms. Friedman mentioned, we hosted those two Korean governors, and they were very, very happy and thanked us countless times. All four of the council members were there for what we've done, and it's kind of interesting that tonight we talked about women's issues and so forth. This is the ultimate issue, where over 200,000 women, not all of them Koreans, but over 200,000 women during the Second World War were forced into sexual slavery, Koreans, Chinese, Southeast Asian, including 200 Dutch women who were in Indonesia and colonial Dutch presence there in Indonesia, were taken into sexual slavery by, by the Japanese Army. So, anyway, I'm very happy that we did this memorial, I'm very pleased that, that we took that step. And then finally, the 14th Annual Armenian Orphans Fund had their annual telethon, and I always attended. It's a great event, and I believe this year they raised, when I left that evening, they had raised somewhere in the vicinity of $90,000. It'll go to fund an orphanage and to take care of orphans in Armenia. That's it, Mr. Weaver.
Friedman has another item.
I forgot to mention, it was also on Sunday, the Glendale Historic Society's big annual home tour that they do every year. They were in the Casa Verdugo area, and I think they sold out. They may have, because I told, they told me they sold over 300 tickets going into the weekend, and usually people also try to, to buy.
500.
500, 500 tickets, and people all, you know, walk up and buy tickets at the time, and so, congratulations to the Historic Society, and a big thank you to the homeowners who allowed all those people to traipse through their beautiful homes to see Glendale's history. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I'll just say for the heck of it, I was with the animals over in Pasadena, the Pasadena Humane, that were contracted with.
I forgot to mention, it was also on Sunday, the Glendale Historic Society's big annual home tour that they do every year. They were in the Casa Verdugo area, and I think they sold out. They may have, because I told, they told me they sold over 300 tickets going into the weekend. And usually, people also try to, to buy.
500.
500, 500 tickets. And people all, you know, walk up and buy tickets at the time. And so, congratulations to the Historic Society and a big thank you to the homeowners who allowed all those people to traipse through their beautiful homes to see Glendale's history. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I'll just say for the heck of it, I was with the animals over in Pasadena, Pasadena Humane, that were contracted with, they do all our services here. And over a thousand dogs, you gotta see them together. They all marched around the Rose Bowl, no problems. The other thing, yesterday, Women of Achievement was handed out to 27 women by Business Life. Women that have achieved a lot in their lifetime. Add over 450 people at Hilton for that one, so that was a great event, too. Okay, what is next?
Next on the agenda is the consent items, including minutes following the routine and may be acted upon by one motion. A member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such request before a motion is proposed.
Mr. Sinonian.
I'd like to request separate consideration for item 5B.
He is in boy?
Yes.
Okay. No cards or?
Noting that, I will move the remainder of the consent calendar.
For a second.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers, Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Caro.
Yes.
Nayan.
Yes.
Herr Weaver.
All right. Please read 5B on the record.
5B is Chief Information Officer and Glen, and General Manager of Glendale Water and Power regarding purchase of hardware, software and associated support for supplementary capacity to the existing backup and recovery system. He won his motion authorizing issuance of purchase order with CDWG and mountain not exceed $518,936.
Thank you. Mr. Sinonian.
My question just relates to the issue of the competitive bidding nature of this contract. And I, I read the report, and there's a paragraph in the report which talks about what appears to be a previous contract that's competitively bid upon. Now, we're being asked to, to vote on a $518,000 and some change contract, but that doesn't seem to be a separate RFP on this. So, I'm trying to, I'm just trying to understand what happened there.
Brian Ganley will give you the background, sir.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, councilmembers, Sinonian. Yes, this is an expansion of an existing system. So, there was a process approximately a year and a half ago to put the original system in place. And this is to purchase some additional hardware for some additional backup capacity. The city's data needs have grown over the past roughly year and a half since the system was installed. So, this was put out to bid. I'm sorry if that's not clear in the staff item. But it was put out to bid and it's being issued under a contract called WISC, which is the Western States Contracting Alliance. I'm sure there's probably not enough detail in here, but the Western States Contracting Alliance is a contract vehicle that's handled by several of the Western states that bids a number of technology and other related items. So, that, that contract is automatically competitively bid for a wide range of technology products. For example, we purchase our city cell phones under that same contract. Quite common, takes advantage of the volume purchasing pricing that's available to a very large purchasing block of those several Western states together in their purchasing volume and power.
So, if I understand this correctly, in other words, WISC itself is sort of a...
It's a clearinghouse for...
Yeah, it's a clearinghouse which has already passed through a bidding process.
Much the way that we would buy fleet vehicles and other bulk items.
Okay. It's very similar to the GSA Schedule CMAS, but actually preferable for most technology items.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Mr. Ganley. Okay, any further comment? How's our motion?
Move the item?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers, Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Caro.
Yes.
Nayan.
Yes.
Herr Weaver.
All right, thank you. Using my program, I'm going back. I forgot I had to put in nomination for next week, a replacement, Mr. Herman on the Design Review Board. I'd like to put Judy Palmer in nomination. Hold on, next week. Sorry about that. Okay, what's next, please?
Next item under oral communications, this will, you'll have the full five-minute portion at the conclusion of all city business. This portion is for the three-minute community event announcements.
Leon Mayor, followed by Melinda Clark.
Good afternoon, Mayor Weaver. I'm back after a short sabbatical.
Yeah, where you been?
It's a...
This doesn't count.
You don't have, you don't have to answer that.
Where in the world have you been?
I've been around. And we still have a lot of things happening at the library and things were happening even in my absence. First of all, some short announcements. October 19th at the library, Central Library, the Earthworm Ensemble, country rock and so forth, October 19th. Great for the family. I have flyers here. Raise your hand as I leave if you're interested. Also, October 10th, we're having author Nelson Castillo, an immigration attorney with extensive experience in the preparation and processing of family and employment-based immigration petitions. He is past president of the Hispanic National Bar Association. He'll talk about the green card. That's Thursday, October 10th. The main announcement I'm making tonight is about an event starting October 4th, the exhibit and lecture is starting October 14th, and the exhibit will go on from October 4th through October 19th. And this is the Forgotten Heroes, the Armenian Legion and World War I. And Professor Byron Shamasyan will be lecturing this Friday at 7 o'clock at the library. Now, the Armenian Museum of America is the largest Armenian museum in the diaspora and is a major repository for a vast array of artifacts and publications. And the Legion, the Armenian Legion fought on the side of the Allies in World War I against the Ottoman Empire and the Rush and the Germany. And this is really a, they were deadlocked in a military stalemate and leaders of the American diaspora were determined to raise a voluntary fighting force to support the Allies. And these brave men who volunteered to risk their lives in a struggle for their people's political and human rights, they ultimately failed in their quest. They were betrayed by the Allies and the Armenians were unable to achieve any regress for their tremendous losses of life, property and sacrifices. The exhibit deals with all the things that happened to this Armenian Legion from the inception till the bad things that happened and when they were so double-crossed by the Allied Army leadership. So, we urge you to come October 4th to hear the professor. That's 7 o'clock. And from the 4th to the 19th, tremendous, meaningful exhibits will be there at the library. Thank you. Everything is free. Parking is validated at the adjoining parking structure.
Thank you, Leon.
And?
Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Welcome back. Melinda Clark, followed by Arlene Vidor. This is Oktoberfest.
Good evening, City Council. Please forgive me, I'm having bad allergies, so my voice and my presence is not as it should be today. But my name is Melinda Clark. I'm the Executive Director of the Montrose Verdugo City Chamber of Commerce, and I am here on behalf of them to tell you about one of the largest events put on in the city of Glendale. That would be the 36th Annual Oktoberfest. And I think we have possibly a slide which tells just a little bit about it. We have some exciting new things this year. If you haven't been, we've expanded the event a little bit into the 2,200 block. This is a very unique event. It's all done open-air. It's out in the street. It's one of the only events, like, it's kind of in Southern California, and that's thanks to the safety of our Glendale Police Department, who keeps this event very safe. We start at 12 o'clock. We end at 11 o'clock. And some of the other new things that we have, we are actually, and since I've been here, we've never had that, having German beer for the first time actually brought in for this event. All three of these beers are served in Munich, Germany, at the original Oktoberfest, and they were all brewed in Munich. So, we are excited about that. The community kept saying, more German, more German, so we're doing that. We have, of course, our Shreiner's fine sausages. They're going to bring us a German potato salad this year for the first time. So, that's exciting. This is truly an event for everyone. We've made an entire family-friendly zone that's on the 2,400 block, where it's going to have rides, games, traveling magicians. It's going to have somebody walking around with accordion, playing the German music. There's going to be a youth stage down there that's going to be playing bands from the local bands in the community, from the high schools, from the junior high. We have lots of bands also coming that are dads. There's some band called the Dad Beats that's from Verdugo Woodlands. So, we're trying to make this really a community event that's drawing community support. We also have mini contests that you can join. We have our Best Dressed Dog Contest that happens in the kids' area. We have Mr. and Mrs. Oktoberfest. We have the Little Mr. and Masters, so you, everybody can join in. There's a place where you can take pictures with your family if you're dressed up. We will be having the German-American brass band of Southern California. They're there with us every year. They're exciting. The De Oberlander dancers, they come and they dance, and they play the Alporn, and they play the cowbells. So, this is an exciting event. It brings a lot of people, a lot of business to the city of Montrose. All the events, if you join in them, in these contests, we give away, you know, certificates from the businesses in Montrose. So, this is truly a community event. So, we would love to have you come up there to Montrose and join us. And if you haven't been up there in a while, this is your time to come and see and come to our Oktoberfest. And that is all I have for that. Is that good, Mr. Mayor?
Very much.
Thank you.
Just for the people, I worked it for a number of years. Most exciting thing for me was when we chased some kids with a keg of beer after the event, trying to get away, but they couldn't get the keg over the fence and they had to, they had to leave it. And I've also cooked it and burned my, threw three layers of clothes, came home with a nice suntan. But come, if you have children, come early, from noon on, because the character of it changes as you get in the nighttime hours. The kids coming from the UCLA football game and all the young come, it's a different crowd. So, bring the kids during the afternoon, enjoy it. That's what I always do. And by being early, you can get a place to park up there, okay? Next speaker, Arlene Vidor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, City Councilmembers and members of staff. Arlene Vidor, I have a, an announcement to make. Maybe it's a little bit different. We are having, the Associates of Brand Library are having a fundraiser called Glendale Collects to benefit the Brand Library. This event is going to be held on October 12th from 5:00 to 7:30 in the evening at a really extraordinary home in Glendale, in the Chevy Chase Estates area. And what's nice about it is that the owners of the home, our hosts, are wonderful art collectors. They have a really great eclectic collection of all kinds of interesting things that they're really excited about showing to people. So, we're going to try to make some money to support the restoration and framing of all of those ceiling fragments that came off of the Brand Library's wall. It's a little bit outside of our mission. We usually support events, but we thought we'd try to be philanthropic and try something different. So, this event is going to be on October 12th. I don't know whether the specific information came up on the last slide. Yeah, I wasn't quite finished with that. $65 per person for Associates members and $100 per person for non-members. And you can pick up your tickets directly through our website at associatesofbrand.org or, and on the next slide, what we see is some other locations. We are selling tickets through Glendale Arts this year, and they've been wonderful in helping us promote the event, as has the city. Yasmin Beers and Dan Bell and Annette Fartanian have all pitched in and helped us out to get the word out. But the Americana at Brand Concierge Desk, Glendale Community College Theater Box Office, and you can also mail a check-in directly to us at 1601 West Mountain, which is the Brand Library's address. So, Glendale Collects is hopefully going to be the first of a few more events we'll have, where we're using a tagline to really describe events at people's homes who collect art and their willingness to share their treasures with us. So, these are some little images of, well, three images of some of the ceiling material that was brought down, uncovered and brought down off the Brand Library's ceilings, over 100 years old, in need of restoration and framing, so everybody can appreciate it forever. So, that's what we're raising money for here. October 12th, hope everybody can buy a ticket. I think all of you got an invitation. If you haven't by now, you, you certainly will soon. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Arlene. I got my tickets. Hope to see everyone there.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Freeman. Yes, we appreciate that. I'll just have Cindy pitch in. She has more information, maybe.
First of all, I wanted to, I know we don't have much time, but I wanted to thank Arlene and the Associates for their support. They've been supporters of the Brand Library since 1969, and they're going to be an integral part of our opening festivities. So, I have an exciting announcement, which is that Brand will be reopening in March. We actually have a couple of events planned. March 22nd, we'll be having a black tie optional gala, which the Associates will sponsor and will be a fundraiser. On March 27th, we will have a ribbon cutting. March 30th, we will have an open house for the community. So, I'm sure you share my excitement in, in the reopening of Brand Library after a two-year renovation. So, thanks again to the Associates for their support.
Here's something to see. See how it looked 100 years ago. Okay, I have no more cause for communication. What is next, please?
Next is adoption of ordinance. It's that 7A is ordinance authorizing issuance of electric revenue bonds, 2013 series not exceed $60 million aggregate principal amount payable out to the Electric Works Revenue Fund. This was introduced on September 17th, 2013 by Councilmember Najarian.
And I have one card, Mike Mohill. Two minutes.
My name is Mike Mohill. I noticed that the City Manager has not gone ahead and presented to the public that the $60 million is more than $60 million when you go ahead and include the interest on this bond and the life of it. The question is, where is this money going to be used for? Artie, would you please show my PowerPoint for the public? You're going to see... Artie, the PowerPoint, please.
It's on.
Okay, great. The money's going to pay for the salaries and the pensions of the city workforce. Because what's happened, ladies and gentlemen, if we've transferred millions of dollars out of GWP to the city workforce, that's why we need the bond. That's real simple. Had we not transferred money out of GWP, we would not tonight have in the public to pay for a bond that was never, never necessary. We have city employees, $90,000 pensions for life. That's an example of $100,000, 30 years of service, a safety van, fire and police. We have a non-safety person, 75% or $7,000 pension for life. And these people are getting this kind of money, ladies and gentlemen, for the next 25 and 35 years, and the general public is living on a small social security check. Councilmembers, is this fair? Is it fair that the public has to pay for these pensions? The reason is they're paying for these pensions because you've made this bond necessary, like the water bond. You keep talking about it's being used for the infrastructure? No. The money gets transferred out of GWP into the pockets of our city workforce. Councilman Najarian and Mrs. Freeman also never talked about the bonds or the, or the GWP utility rates during the election, and I find that Mr. Najarian is now proposing it.
Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Mike Mohill.
Well, same thing as two or three weeks ago when I were voting to approve the city employees' contract that had absolutely nothing to do with this. And he's back with the same thing on the issuance of bonds, having nothing to do with the subject matter. You didn't want to say anything, did you, about that interest on the 60? Want to let it ride?
Yeah, unless you want an answer, sir.
No, 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 let it go. It was introduced, we had a full discussion last week. Mr. Cantaro, are you moving it? Moving the item?
No, I'll be voting against it.
Oh, wait, no, no, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Not for the reasons that Mr. Mohill mentioned.
I was looking at B. I was looking at B. Mr. Najarian, you want to make the motion?
I will move the ordinance at...
I will move the ordinance at 7A.
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
No.
Fartanian?
No.
Mayor Weaver?
Aye, way to, just like last week, okay, 7B.
7B is an ordinance amending the zoning code related to housing definitions and permitted use charts in accordance with items identified in the housing element and analysis of impediments to fair housing choice programs, this was introduced on September 17th, 2013 by Councilmember Quintero.
Yes, hold on, do we need, again, we've already had the briefing, presentation.
I don't think we do.
Do you have a correction?
We do have to read in a correction, sir.
Oh, correction, okay, ready.
Mayor Weaver, members of council, we accidentally put in a change to senior housing, we want to make no change to the way the code is right now for existing housing, so on table 11, 3011A for senior housing, we want it permitted in all multifamily zones, just as it is today, for table 3014 in the mixed-use zones, we want to permit senior housing in the IMUR with a conditional use permit, and permit it in the SFMU zone, subject to Note 5, just as it is today, and then also in our commercial zones, table 3012A, we want to allow permitted use for senior housing above the second floor, and as a conditional use on the first floor in the C1, C2, C3, CR, and CH zones, so again, that would be retaining just as the way we have it now.
So it'll be 7B as amended?
Right, we would be the...
Which brings it back to the original.
It brings it back to the original, correct.
Mr. Quintero?
I will agree to that, so I will move 6B.
As amended?
As amended.
7B, what did you say?
Seven.
7B, we got the hint.
Motion?
Yes, second.
Second, I second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Fartanian?
Yes.
Mayor Weaver?
Aye, and again, for any latecomers, the public hearing on the property of Pennsylvania has been postponed for two weeks to a date certain in two weeks from tonight, so if you're hanging it around through all the items, no need to, okay, what is next, please?
Eight, under action items, 8A is director of library arts and culture regarding Brand Library and Arts Center shelving project, 8A1 is resolution dispensing with competitive bidding and awarding a contract to Yamada Enterprises in the amount of $118,160 to design, purchase, and install shelving in the Brand Library and Arts Center.
Dr. Cholo?
Yes, sir, for the purposes of getting the type of shelving that we currently have that matches, there is one provider, that would be Yamada Enterprises, we're asking that the council allow us that sole source contract for the $118,000 listed in the staff report, if you have any specific questions, Ms. Cleary can answer them.
So there's a specific kind of...
If we want to stay matching with what we have, yes.
Are there any questions, or do you want to hear Madam Librarian?
I have questions.
Right, have your system.
So I understand that we want to match the shelves, and the report indicates that this specific entity is the only manufacturer the library was able to identify, is that how it works, we have to identify a supplier, a vendor, in order for the process to be fulfilled, because...
If we were bidding out something, if we were looking for generic library shelving, we would put out an RFP and let people come to us, what we're looking for is manufactured by this particular company, and we own equipment that matches that today.
And we did, if I may add, we did reach out to two other vendors, and either they couldn't meet the requirements, or they chose not to respond.
Okay, give another question, is there a motion?
I'll move the item.
Second.
8A1, roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Fartanian?
Yes.
Mayor Weaver?
Aye, next, please.
8B is director of community services and parks regarding amendment to existing lease agreement with new singular wireless PCS LLC AT&amp;T for city-owned property located at Fern Lane and Passa Glen Drive where the Glendale Sports Complex is located, 81 is an ordinance for introduction.
Mr. Cholo?
Yes, sir, we have a proposed ordinance that would amend the lease that we have with the new singular wireless folks, basically what we're doing is expanding the size of the footprint that is leasable, but I believe five feet, and we are actually able to secure $1,000 a month more in our lease rate, including a 4% escalator, without increasing the term of the lease, so our parks manager, Kokopanosian, is here if you have any specific questions, other than that, we would ask your approval.
Hey, comment, is there a motion?
I'll move.
Second, okay, on 8B1, roll, wait, introduction.
Just introduction.
I almost slipped up, are you introducing?
Yes, I will introduce.
It's been introduced, 8C.
8C is chief of police regarding replacement of police joint air support unit MD 520N helicopter, N272BP, 81 is resolution dispensing with competitive bidding and authorizing negotiation with MD Helicopters, Inc. for the purchase of a new MD 520N helicopter.
And this is for a chopper that's already run out of its useful life, right?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, that is essentially it, if you recall back in 2007, we transitioned...
I can't, it's too far back.
We transitioned to a joint helicopter unit with the city of Burbank, wherein we reused our fleet from two helicopters that we owned separately and operated jointly to three helicopters that we operate together and jointly own, when we entered into that MOU, we looked at our depreciation schedules and extended the life of the helicopters to 20 years or 15,000 flight hours, whichever came first, we are now hitting that 20 years with the oldest of our helicopters, hence we're here tonight to request your approval to enter negotiations with MD Helicopters to replace that helicopter, part of those negotiations, the cost of MD would be about $2.7 million, just a little bit over that, plus the sales tax, but they have also agreed to supply a tail boom we need for one of our other helicopters, which will save us about $166,000 in maintenance, one of the things that I think we consider, we are recommending that we stay with the same type of helicopter for a few reasons, one of the primary reasons is noise, MD helicopters is the only helicopter that has a no-tar technology, which is basically if you look at our helicopters, they have no tail rotor, the tail rotor creates most of the noise that helicopters generate, and so flying over noise-sensitive areas, this reduces the impact to the community, secondly, maybe at least from an operator's standpoint, this helicopter meets our mission requirements, we're primarily an observation platform, but it also allows us to do specialized operations, which includes working with the fire department, long-line operations, surveillance operations, and some limited type light rescue if we get into that type of stuff, and then finally, from a safety standpoint, maintaining the same technology allows us to operate a standardized fleet, so this way we have three helicopters, they are all the same, the pilots fly the same helicopter, the mechanic maintains the same helicopter, it's the same tooling, same parts, same thing, day in and day out, and that gives us an advantage in terms of maintaining a very safe, what has traditionally been and will continue to be, a very safe operation, there are a couple of offsets financially, first of all, Burbank will reimburse us for 50% of the cost of helicopter, that's part of our MOU, we used to trade helicopters in in days gone by, MD helicopter no longer takes trade-ins, so at some point, we'll be back talking to you, because what we will do is sell the existing helicopter, show we are anticipating a $450,000 to $550,000 cost offset when we sell the other helicopter, which will then go back into the fund and offset that, with that, that's sort of a very brief overview of what we're doing, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Quintero?
Assistant chief, deputy chief, I'm not sure which title it is, we have noted experts that have come to the podium and have said or questioned whether we need helicopters in this city, is it cost-effective, et cetera, et cetera, so what's your opinion on those experts?
This program has proven to be very effective for us, from a couple of standpoints, and let me a couple anecdotal things, one is, we're a fairly large city geographically, we have 30 square miles, a lot of times the helicopter's first on scene, especially onto, you know, windy canyon roads where it takes a car a long time to get up there, I think, you know, a few of you will remember an incident, I want to say it's 18 to 24 months ago, where we had a stabbing up, you know, up at the far reaches of one of our canyons, while the helicopter's the first one on scene, before anybody else can get out, the helicopter's already setting up the perimeter, had blocked off the escape path, suspects were taken into custody, so it really works as a force multiplier, working up there and having, you know, run that operation, work that operation for a while, it can replace 14 to 20 people on the ground in terms of what you can see, look, as of last week, we had a burglary in progress down here in our South Command, the vehicles, maroon vehicle taking off, helicopter picks it up immediately, we have a pursuit, it takes us into the city of Los Angeles, we have, you know, once the pursuit terminated, the suspect bailed out of the car, was bouncing over fences in an area that's very unfamiliar to the officers on the ground, the helicopter observer was basically to contain them, contain them between an alley, a main block, and two side streets, and the suspect was subsequently taken into, and I can recount several of those, so for us, with a department that is staffed at 1.2 officers per thousand, that's leanly staffed by anybody's definition, this is a big force multiplier for us.
Actually, I have an incident to report, years ago, after an early Tuesday, I drove up to my hillside home, I saw felony in progress, I called, I actually called a captain, who then called 911, and while I'm sitting there at the back of my house, I saw the lights going on in different parts of Glendale, the squad cars, however, I saw a light in the sky coming from Burbank, and that was the helicopter that nabbed the people, and then it was like that, it took the officers in the squad cars quite a while to get up where I live, so...
It shortens our response time, and also have the other thing, is it also keeps an eye on our open space, all those trails that we have behind Brand Park and along the Verdigos, it is the one thing that does keep an eye on everybody that's out there, and, you know, if we have a hiker that's lost or missing, it becomes a valuable tool for us there also.
And is it a 50/50 partnership with Burbank in terms of cost and so forth, or how do we...
Our operational costs are split 50/50.
What's the top speed?
Oh, we're looking at about 135 knots, so just around 150 miles an hour.
So you can get from here to Orange County in no time at all, if you need to?
We can get across the city in a couple of minutes, so...
The mayor has a lunch appointment tomorrow, that's why he's asking.
No, it's just people think a chopper's moving along slow, but I knew the speed was pretty high, so in mutual aid, we can assist other cities.
It has the advantage of speed in moving between locations, and it also has the advantage of slow speed when you're actually working an incident, so when you see us working and we're doing circles, obviously that speed is significantly less.
Oh, yes, understood, better.
Which helps when you're looking at the ground.
Yes, it does, that's a very worthy program, Mr. Fartanian?
Yes, thank you for listing all those important factors which play into the reason why it's important to stay with the same manufacturer, same type of fleet, and I understand those are very important reasons, but just to set that aside for one second, do we have a sort of a ballpark understanding of what the competition would cost, I mean, if saving would be significant, so significant that it would be, it would make sense to consider putting that, you know, the cost against all the factors that you talked about, I mean, do we know?
A comparable model helicopter is going to be priced competitive, it's going to be in the same ballpark, but what then, but other factors then come into play, you know, over the years, we've built up spares tooling that we have for the existing helicopter, if we change the platform, we now have to buy other tooling, our initial looks also would indicate that changing to a different helicopter, our direct operating expenses would go up, the cost of some of the overhaul's and the parts that are time-limited that we have to replace actually end up being more expensive.
There may be need for additional training, I imagine.
Well, and, you know, there's, you know, to put it really, to put it really basically, the helicopter blades on a US-manufactured helicopter spin one way, and on a European brand helicopter, which a lot of people use, spin another way, so literally, you're using the exact opposite foot, so from a pilot's perspective in an emergency, and knowing what to do, having a standardized fleet, if you have an emergency, you know exactly what to do, it's the same in every helicopter you get into, if we had, if we were operating a mixed fleet, we introduce that change, which means somebody now has to think about what they do.
And also in terms of longevity and the expense associated with the maintenance, are competitive helicopters also competitive in terms, are also similarly valued compared to the MD model that we're talking about?
Approximately, yes.
Okay, also, yeah, I just wanted to add, I had a similar incident as Mr. Quintero about a decade ago, fortunately it was just a false alarm, and, you know, the alarm company reported the alarm to the police, and before I could even deactivate the alarm, the helicopter was there, I mean, the reaction time was ridiculous, so I believe it's a very, very good asset that we have.
Where is it manufactured?
Mesa, Arizona.
That's it.
Some of the parts are now out, but the assembly point is Mesa, Arizona.
Mr. Najarian?
So in this day and age of mutual aid and the blurring of the borders between Glendale and La Crisena and La Canada, do we have an opportunity to get some of the cost-sharing with those communities, we have to respond to La Crisena or to La Canada?
Do we go over the border?
In an emergency, I'm sure they'll take aid from any agency, but have we offered perhaps a buy-in on some of that service?
Generally speaking, mutual aid is offered without cost, so if we have a major incident and we request a resource from another entity, if they have it, they'll send it, and we reciprocate, if they have it, we'll send it, where you'll probably occasionally see Pasadena's aircraft over here, we have, if you will, sort of an informal operating arrangement with them, that allows us to, again, leverage some of the things that we don't have financially, so we actually jointly now schedule our unit with Pasadena's, so when we're up, they're down, when we're down, they're up, so...
But best not to count dollars from our neighbors and...
No, and especially on a mutual aid, especially on a mutual aid-type arrangement, as I said, generally, if we have the resource, we offer it.
You can probably get across La Canada Flit Ridge in 15 seconds?
Yes.
Okay, any other questions?
I'll move the item.
Second, a roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Fartanian?
Yes.
Mayor Weaver?
All right, thank you, gentlemen, have a good quiet evening.
Got another one.
Oh, you're going to stay for the next one?
You did so well the first time, got one more.
Okay, let's go with the next one.
Next item at D is chief of police regarding purchase of a global positioning system, primary display and helicopter, N103CG, and video downlink receivers and equipment to be used with the police helicopters grant funded by the Urban Area Security Initiative for 2011 and 2012, 81 is resolution dispensing with competitive bidding and authorizing negotiation with MD Helicopters, Inc. for the purchase and installation of GPS system and broadcast microwave services for the purchase of video downlink receivers and equipment.
Now, explain this briefly in layman's terms.
This says, this is two things, this is an opportunity to upgrade our systems using some grant funding, the first thing is, our second oldest helicopter, there's grant funding available to basically what I'm going to call upgrade the instrument panel, to put in GPS units and flight instrumentation for the pilot, so it will match the newest helicopter, our second oldest helicopter will be with us for another 15 years before it reaches the end of its useful life for us, so here's an opportunity with grant funding to standardize our operation at really no cost, no cost to the city, so that's the first item, the second item, I think you've heard us talk before about our downlink capability, the cameras on the aircraft have the ability to take that image and then broadcast it to police cars, or broadcast it into our mountaintop receivers, and then down a T1 line to the city network, so that if there's a major incident, we can look at that from our desktop computers, so the second part of the grant is to purchase receivers and additional downlink equipment that basically expands and enhances that capability for us.
Clear, understood.
Is there a... I do have a question, though.
I'll second it.
So before we, can I ask my question?
Go ahead.
Again, we're, today, there was just this avalanche of no-bid contracts, so I'm asking the same question, the staff report indicates that going out to bid would require coordination, installation of services between multiple vendors, what does that mean?
That if we were going to buy a Chevy, we wouldn't necessarily put a Ford engine in it and the components for a different model, I mean, I defer to Deputy Chief, but the idea being that if we have this platform manufactured from this particular vendor to integrate... from this particular vendor, to integrate the, the software and onboard systems, it makes it considerably easier to work with them.
With respect to the GPS technology, right now, the MD Helicopters is the only one who holds what they call the supplemental type certificate, which is authorization by the FAA to install that equipment. They are the sole holder of that at this point in time. So it doesn't really give us an operation. We comply with Federal Aviation Administration regulations when we do this. So that, they're the only ones who can do that for us right now. The downlink equipment is sole source because we, years ago, we've already started purchasing our equipment from Broadcast Microwave Systems, and so that system is in place, the technology is proprietary, and what we're doing is we're, we're expanding and adding to our existing system.
So you, we basically stuck with it because we started out with them, now we have to keep going?
Yeah, we went through a competitive process when we evaluated the, the initial systems.
And do we know whether, so there, there is another system in existence or other systems in existence, it's just that what we have works with this stuff best, or works with this stuff only. Now, do we know that maybe at some point replacing the system would, would save us money? Because at some point, you know, being stuck with the contractor, being stuck with the product and keep going back to that product doesn't necessarily mean that we're being economical about it. So that's my, I don't know if you understand my question?
We continually evaluate that, and at this point, what we would have to, if, if we change systems, we would have to remove it from all of our aircraft, we would have to remove our mountaintop receivers, et cetera. We have invested in this system with grant funding over time. So right now, staff's evaluation is that it makes sense to continue with this company. You know, especially for the amounts that we're looking at. What we're really doing is enhancing the ability with the receivers of our folks on the ground to see it. So as a, as, instead of having a couple of receivers, we'll have multiple receivers. That means they can be in more cars, they can be with the fire department. You know, as I said, we can bring both, not only our, our camera images, but we also have infrared capabilities. So even on the last fire we had, when fire asks for hotspots, we're downlinking the, that information to them. This just expands what we can do.
Okay. So in other words, we're, we're not getting a raw deal?
No, or actually, I think we're getting a very good deal.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I have a chief question. I know you have a plane and fly. Do you fly choppers too? You ever?
I haven't flown a helicopter in a long time, but I am licensed to fly, so I have flown both fixed wing and helicopters.
Okay, just curious. Thank you. Okay, is there a motion on the item?
There is, and there's a second.
Shannon, a second. Hey, roll call.
Council members, Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Sanian?
Yes.
Air Weaver?
All right. Thank you. Now, good night. Next, please.
Next item is City Manager regarding replacement equipment and software associated integration services and training related to GTV six live broadcasting, video production, and media archiving. E one is resolution dispensing with competitive bidding and authorizing execution of an agreement with Keycode Media, Inc. in an amount of one hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars.
Mr. Ochoa, I assume after you finish, Mr. Sanani will have a question.
With apologies to Mr. Sanani and to the council, it's the hit parade of, of items that we are looking to solvers. We do need at this point to invest in GTV six. We have the funding to do so. In order for us to move forward with the live broadcast, the video production, and the media archiving, we have identified a, a single vendor that can do all three, that is compatible with us, that works with the larger area and some of the folks that we work with. And just as important is local, so to the extent that we have any breakdowns, that we have any items or pieces of equipment that malfunction, need to be replaced or fixed, that we can get to them very quickly. If you have any specific questions about the capabilities of our system, our broadcast coordinator, Brian Halloran is here, as is Public Information Officer Tom Lorenz, so.
Russia, I mean, I'd like some detail on what is it that makes, I mean, why is this our only choice? I sort of heard Mr. Ochoa, but I'm not sure that, I mean, that could be interpreted in many ways.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, in, in, sorry, I'm much more comfortable behind the camera.
Oh, you know how it feels.
I know. Because the systems that we're requesting have to be integrated to work together very well, we need the, the company that deals in the, the equipment and integrates it and provides the service needs to be proficient in all of these major systems. So it just makes sense, would, would be the best purpose for us, most efficient, to have one point of contact to provide those services.
For all three of those, for all three of the services we're looking to provide, we could only identify one vendor that does indeed provide all three of those services in a proficient manner and who is within a reasonable radius of the city.
Reasonable radius of the city means that if we go?
We don't want to drive to San Diego or to Central Valley.
Because there's servicing involved?
If we have to take it to them to have an item replaced or fixed, yes.
Mr. Lorenz, would you like to add something?
Sure. Mr. Weaver, members of city council and city staff, I'm more comfortable in front of the camera. Brian and his staff obviously have researched this to the extent, most of our equipment goes back to about nineteen ninety-nine, some recent purchases are two thousand and four, and that's, that's primarily it for our equipment as to where it exists today. With that, we're behind the curve, so we have to update the equipment. Looking at the three major components, the manufacturers are different, and we could go directly to other vendors that are licensed to sell those. The problem we have is finding a vendor such as this one that can migrate them all into one system that works on one platform for GTV six. They're pretty much the only game in town. In fact, they, they do it for GUSD, Burbank, Pasadena City College, a couple other entities. They're about the only game in town. We look at it as almost like the TMZ, the Twenty Mile Zone. When something fails, one of our cameras, we don't have that backup system where we can pull in multiple cameras with the multiple locations that we shoot various commission meetings, approximately twenty-four?
Twenty-four a month.
Twenty-four a month. So with that, we have to be able to service our equipment quickly, we have to have the support, come to our site to repair, or with that, provide training and assistance to us. With that, we cannot send a piece of equipment to Texas, New York. We could probably get a piece of equipment for a couple thousand dollars cheaper, but in the end run, it would cost us a few thousand dollars just to get it done within the time we need to, without, you know, having problems with programming.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion?
So.
Here's a second. Okay, roll call.
Council members, Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Sanian?
Yes.
Air Weaver?
Aye. Next, please.
ADEF is Director of Community Development, continued from September twenty-four, twenty thirteen, regarding contract amendment for scanning and documents and records for the Community Development Department. F one is motion on authorizing execution of amendment number four to the professional services agreement with data micro imaging in an amount of two hundred and five thousand. F two is motion directing staff to issue an RFPN to solicit additional proposals.
And that's to take all the paper products and put them on, onto computers?
We do the digital scanning, that's right.
So they can't be lost, ever, in a fire. We have all the records.
This is a little bit different than the previous items that you considered this evening. In this particular case, we have had this vendor for an extended amount of time. We amended this contract, we are happy with the services provided, we are confident in the pricing, but there again, if the council so desires to do an RFP for this contract, we can do that. There are other providers. Again, we've been quite satisfied with the, with the, the services. Hassan?
Yeah, Mr. Stuart Tom is here, the building official. There are very specific reasons that there are not very many companies that can do the level of work that we do, and Mr. Tom can explain a little bit more.
Please. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Stuart Tom, building official for the city. I would like to start by pointing out that while what's before you today is actually an extension of our existing digitizing contract, this fits into our entire file net system for the city, which is the backbone of our data management system. And we actually, as, as Mr. Ochoa has indicated, we're very, very happy with the service that DMI has given us. In fact, we've worked closely with them on almost a monthly basis to make sure that the manner in which they digitize and have lossless images in a particular type of TIFF format, have all the, the detail that we need. So if we ever need to look at a plan, we can zoom in at the highest level and we can see the details and the dimensions, the notes and everything else on the plan. And then they, in addition to that, they index it properly so that it fits into our file net system. We, originally years ago, we started out with a company called Continental Graphics, they are out of business. When we eventually went to DMI, they were the only firm that could digitize the images to the, the level of quality that we needed and could turn it around quickly enough for us. One of the things that I would like to stress as well is, they're also local. They are located in Santa Clarita, which is probably the closest major digitizing firm to Glendale. And the reason that that's important is when we ship the actual documents out to be digitized, they're in the vendor's possession for a fixed period of time, generally a month at a time. There are times while those plans are out of our possession, we get a request. The request may come from the council and may come from the community that they need to see a document, and we have an arrangement with them where we can get those documents back. If we were to go with another firm that was not as close, we wouldn't have that type of relationship with them, don't know whether or not the quality would work, don't even know whether or not it would work with our file net system. But we are very happy with them, and this is just an extension of our current contract. Last thing I would like to point out is the costs are covered. The most expensive image that we have digitized by DMI is a full e-size sheet. Their cost to us is two dollars and ninety-seven cents. We charge three dollars per sheet to our customers. So, and the, the two dollars and ninety-seven cents includes all their administration as well. So it actually covers the cost. We're happy with that.
If I may add one more thing, the file net system that Mr. Tom is, is discussing is the backbone of the entire permitting system that all of the different parts of the Community Development Department and the Fire Department connect to. So the data that's collected, and to the extent that the images that are, are stored in the data, we, we are able to access them based on the addresses that we use, and that's an important piece of the work. It's complex data connection work as well as just imaging.
Okay. I have a couple of questions. Now, what I heard is that they're, they're really good, and we're very happy with the service that they provide, and that they're close, which is important. And the cost is covered. I, I do want to ask you about, what does that mean? The way this works is someone asks for a document, we send it out to be scanned, and then we provide it to whoever requested it, or we send them out to be scanned anyway?
We send out all documents to be imaged for permanent archiving purposes.
So the cost is being incurred at the time when they're being imaged, right?
Correct. We, we charge a fee at the time the plans are approved. We actually count every sheet, and we charge three dollars per sheet. So our costs are completely covered. We've worked this out over time with DMI to make sure that there is zero cost that is passed on to the general fund. The actual customer pays the cost.
Right, right. Okay, so the key there is that all these documents are paid for?
Absolutely.
Mandatory, I mean, they have to be, because otherwise they wouldn't be generated. But, so, so going back, they're, it's a good service, they're close, they're close, and cost recovered. What I don't hear is that there is no other entity, no other company that can provide the same service in a good qual, you know, good, in the manner that we expect them to do it, and that are all so close. I mean, I heard that there wasn't one. I also heard that there used to be one that went out of business, but I'm not hearing that there isn't one. So we don't know whether there is actually a company out there that does exactly the same thing that we talked about at, at the same cost or even maybe cheaper than that. Can, can you conclusively tell me that that's the case?
No, and I think that's why the option two in your staff report is to direct staff to do an RFP.
Right.
So we, as Hassan and Stuart point out, it's, it's probably a, a finite list of folks who can do it and do it to the specification and with the systems that we have here, but we would not tell you that there is nobody else, and thus, option two is direct staff to do an RFP.
And how much is, is an RFP associated with a high expense?
I mean, it's, it's an expense of, of staff, time, and effort amid the, the workload that Stuart's folks are doing right now as, as well as purchasing. So, you know, can it be done? Absolutely can be done.
Okay.
Is, is that our recommendation? Very obviously, no. We're very happy with the people that we have. We'd like to move forward with them on this extension of their contract, but ultimately it's council's call.
I would like to point out one additional thing. Part of the reason that we are so happy with them is that we've worked with DMI over the years to make sure that their indexing of the files meshes with our file net system, which is that backbone. Whereas there may be other firms that can turn around at a, a competitive cost, e-size, lossless images, it would certainly take time to get them up to speed to our system because they don't know the indexing of our system. DMI already knows that because they've helped us build that, and they're already competitive or, or it, it's a very, very good price. So whether or not we could find somebody that could even provide the same level of service, that's questionable. Whether or not they could beat the price, that's, that's another issue.
And we'll never know unless we do an RFP.
That is true.
And, and again, all, all of those factors, I, I believe, are quantifiable. You know, the inconvenience associated with a new vendor that has to make sure that they're well-integrated with our city, all of that can be quantified. That is worth something. We don't know whether that something exists in terms of a, a delta between what this and, you know, this, this vendor is offering and what another vendor may be offering. So with that in mind, you know, I would urge my colleagues to send this to an RFP. I think this is an ideal one.
Is that your motion?
That's my motion, yes.
ADEF two.
I have a que, I have a question. In the event of the RFP, do we, are we forced to do the low bidder? In other words, I mean, someone comes in with a low bid and then all of it, we have to accept it, and all of a sudden, we're faced with all kinds of issues, and maybe the attorney can fill us in.
Councilmember Quintero, you would not have to do, go with the lowest bidder because there's some aspect of professional services in their work, so you could evaluate based on any factors that are set forth in the RFP.
Well, in that case, I guess I'm a little more amenable to.
So the motion is for ADEF two, which is go for an RFP rather than with the existing contractor. Is there, an emotion? Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Roll call.
Councilmembers, Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes. This is for the RFP. Correct, yes.
Taro?
Yes.
Sanian?
Yes.
Air Weaver?
No. Okay, it passes. Go for an RFP. Okay, next, please.
Mayor and council, next item on the agenda is oral communications. Discussion is limited, time is not part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to a speaker. There will be no debate or decision. City Manager, mayor, for the matter, to the appropriate department for investigation and report.
Thank you. Mike Moheal, followed by Sharon Weisman.
Go ahead. You're next to start.
Good evening, council members. My name is Mike Moheal. Last week, Councilman Aaron Najarian had his brother come before the city council with the tearful experience his mother-in-law had with his two-and-a-half-year-old son. His child unexpectedly fell to the ground. The mother-in-law called 911, and Mr. Najarian claimed within two minutes from our, from our fire department came to the rescue. Councilman Najarian's brother emotionally went on saying what heroes Glendale firefighters are, and the public cannot pay firefighters enough money if the patient is your child. the previous week to hire 15 firefighters, rookies, with a starting salary of $68,000, and with the knowledge that after 30 years of service, at the age of 55, would be receiving from the taxpayers of Glendale over $100,000 a year in lifetime pensions. Furthermore, these heroes would be living on the taxpayer's dime for the next 25 to 35 years, while the taxpayer would be living on a small, small, social security check. Councilman Najarian's brother presented only emotional facts. It was obvious Councilman Najarian was using his brother to run interference for him. His job was to kill the messengers of accountability of the Glendale Fire Department. This is the same councilman who only a couple of weeks ago was telling the public that I had intimidated Glendale merchants to put up my posters in their windows in the 2013 election. No, I had no such power. The issue before us should not be emotional, but factual. Recently, Fire Chief Skoggan stated at a council meeting that 85% to 88% of firefighters' time is medically related and not structural or wildfires. No college degree is required to be a rookie firefighter, a rookie with lifetime pension benefits. A couple of years ago, at a budget session, Councilwoman Laura Freeman asked her fire chief point-blank, was there any difference in training between a private ambulance service EMT training and the one provided by Glendale Fire Department? The fire chief stated absolutely there was no difference. The ill-informed citizen Rafi Najarian called a private ambulance service nothing more than a taxi service the other night. Let me remind Mr. Rafi Najarian, your brother and the rest of his council colleagues only a few years ago approved the use of a private ambulance service in order to save the city money. Prior to the year 2000, Glendale used the private ambulance service, AMR, and it only cost the city about $458,626 per year. In July 1998, former city manager Jim Starbert, under his direction, stated we could save money by moving from the private ambulance service to the Glendale Fire Department EMT program. Council approved 18 firefighters, one captain, four ambulances to start the EMT program. In the past 10 years, Glendale Fire Department EMT program has cost the taxpayers over $5.5 million. Is this what you call saving money, Councilman Najarian? The best EMT program in our nation that costs less, around call less than three minutes, and saves lives are the cities of Miami and Seattle. Councilman Najarian, prior to 2001, a firefighter with 30 years of service could retire with 75% of his last year of salary. Today, our heroes receive 90% of their last year of three years of service, last three years of service. Ladies and gentlemen, the viewing audience, in this last election, Councilman Najarian received from the fire union approximately $12,000 in independent expenditure money. Councilman Aron Najarian, the next time you have a problem defending your decisions, please do not have someone else be your spokesperson. It makes you, sir, and the rest of your colleagues look like the clowns you called the people from the county grand jury the previous week. Councilman Najarian and Mr. Mayor, here is a report from the city of Miami, how they work their operation. Thank you. My name is Mike Moehl.
Mr. Najarian, I know you can't respond to everything he said wrong, but you have a brief comment on it, son?
I do. And my question is, what kind of monster are you, Mr. Moehl? I repeat, what kind of monster are you to deny a father whose son lay before him, before his family, motionless, to grant the gratitude towards our fine fire department who came to his rescue? Again, I repeat, what kind of monster are you? These men are here to protect the entire city, and was it not your wife, Mr. Moehl, Lorraine, who fell, and you called the same fire department for help?
He did.
Yes. Yes, it was.
He's left the council.
He's left the room, but my words will ring throughout the city. It is. He is a monster, and he has no business criticizing the men who came to save my nephew. And I don't need my brother to defend the fire department. I can defend them myself. Thank you, Mr. Moehl.
Thank you. Too bad he didn't stick around to hear the whole thing. Easy for him to get up and talk, but he can't take any criticism. Next speaker, Sharon Wiseman, followed by Mike Brilly.
Well, I have a more tough act than usual to follow this evening.
Don't try to top it.
Thank you. Mayor Weaver, councilmembers, city manager Ochoa, and those listening, I'm Sharon Wiseman from far north Glendale, and I'd like to provide some input into the selection of Glendale's next police chief. Crime in Glendale is generally dropping, even though we have fewer officers per capita than neighboring cities. We need a new chief who builds on this great foundation and makes our city even safer. I had hoped the city would convene a resident committee, or hold town hall meetings, or ask the Community Police Partnership Advisory Committee, on which I serve, to see what attributes the public thinks the new chief should possess, but that hasn't happened, and time is getting short. I may be too late already. When considering candidates, I hope the emphasis is on selecting someone who believes in community policing, as Chief DePampa does, rather than military-style tactics that some cities seem to have. Another key issue is our traffic. There are too many drivers who speed and commit other driving errors, and too many pedestrians who do not watch carefully enough. Our new chief should have ideas on improving that situation. I suggest partnering with schools for more driver education and training, and the court system to sentence those who get traffic tickets to similar training, or visiting emergency rooms or morgues to see the results of bad driving. With Glendale's high percentage of immigrants, our new chief must be sensitive to keeping families together when dealing with the federal immigration authorities. Undocumented immigrant residents are at risk of crime and being exploited by employers. They should not fear to bring violations of the law to GPD's attention. I believe our goal should be local crime prevention, not enforcement of federal immigration law, especially now while fundamental changes in that law are being considered. I would like to see the new chief encourage more progress, increasing the percentage of women on the force. More ethnic and cultural diversity, including fluency in some of the many languages other than English spoken in Glendale's homes, should also be a priority when filling vacancies in the department. Lastly, I'm concerned about the number of lawsuits brought against the Glendale Police Department, and hope the new chief can implement more staff training and minimize future costly legal actions. I encourage others in the community to provide their thoughts about what's important in their mind when choosing our new police chief, and thank you for your time this evening. And just personally, I'm very happy with our fire service and our helicopter service living near the hills. Every time they're up there, I know they'll spot any kind of brush fires starting, and I think that makes the city much safer. So, thank you again for your time this evening.
Next speaker, Mike Brilly, followed by Harry Zavos.
My name is Mike Brilly, and I came tonight to ask for assistance with an issue that's been going on for about two years now, with neighbors in my community leaving their trash outside instead of taking it to the trash bin. Initially, I contacted Neighborhood Services on numerous occasions regarding trash being left outside, and after I contacted them, I started to send them, when I spoke with Ernesto, I'm sorry, I don't recall his last name, he gave me his email address. So, what I started doing, instead of just calling, I would send him a picture, which I have copies of a year, about a year of emails and pictures of the trash that's being left out there. And now, it's gotten to the point where I contacted, from the mayor's office, Marion Moose, I'm sorry, I may be pronouncing her last name incorrectly. I've spoken with her, and she suggested, I said, "Well, can I talk to the city council? Maybe they can help me get this resolved." I'm confused at the point that, when I spoke with Ernesto, he told me that there's a $50 or $60 fine for every time this occurs. Now, if I've called in the last two years, maybe 20 times, and I have pictures to support this and emails, why isn't the city of Glendale addressing this? Why isn't the city of Glendale collecting this money? Because if I have a DWP bill, or if I get a parking ticket in Glendale, am I allowed to pay it whenever? I would just like closure with this. And my concern is, when I came home tonight, the neighbor in the next building, there was an exterminator van outside, and my main concern is coming to my home and seeing a rat. I chose, I moved here five years ago from the East Coast. I chose Glendale because I like the community, I like the idea where, because I live right on Glenn Oaks Boulevard, where I'm seeing elderly people at nighttime, walking, in couples, after dinner, whatever. That gives me the idea this is somewhat a safe, nice community. And we all have a right to live where we want to, but also, I should not have to lower my standards of living because others choose to live to think that they're living in a slum. Glendale is not a slum. And it's gotten to, and lastly, it's gotten to the point now, I sent an email to Marion along with a picture of, it's bungalows right next to me, and there's four, and it's just the first two bungalows. It seems like they go, they take turns, who's going to leave their trash out and who's not going to leave their trash out. And the other day, I'm driving in my driveway, and here's a picture, there on the, on one side, I'm on the other, I'm driving in my driveway, the park in the back, and the second bungalow, the tenant in there, she's in the middle of the driveway with just a towel on and a towel on her head. And I'm saying to myself, where am I? One, this is inappropriate, you can do whatever you want to in your house, but safety reasons. We live on Glendale Boulevard, and some lunatic happens to drive by and see this way, man, let me come by here at nighttime. What about if I'm coming home at nighttime, or somebody else in the area? They may not be home or whatever, that this lunatic, but they may see me or somebody else and do something illegal. All I want is closure for this. I shouldn't have to feel as if I'm the police.
We'll take care of it.
And I have this, if you would like to have it.
You've communicated.
Thank you.
We can't do anything about the lady in the towel, though.
Well, I understand that, but my concern is, it's just.
We understand. We understand.
I mean, it's, we can do whatever we want to in the house, but in this day and age, you have to take precautionary measures. You just can't, you can't just, okay, you can go to school by yourself. You can walk to school by yourself. You can't do that nowadays. When I did that, when I was young, I went to school by myself in first and second grade. I wouldn't dare let my child walk to school by themselves now. Unfortunately, this is the town we live in. I would just like closure. That's all I'm asking.
We'll take care of it.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
You don't hear anything within a week or so, would you call in the city council office again, Marion?
I appreciate, and also, in the emails, I gave Marion the number to the landlord in there. I'd just like closure, that's all.
We'll take care of it.
Thank you very much for hearing me.
Thank you for coming. Next speaker, Harry Zavos, followed by Margaret Hammond.
Counsel, my name is Harry Zavos. It's no secret that I filed a grand jury complaint that resulted in a grand jury report. At the last council meeting, the mayor had this to say about what I did. One resident out of 174,000 had the gall, let me repeat, had the gall to criticize us, which is to say, he said, "I had the effrontery, impudence, audacity to criticize the council." The only effect that that statement had on me was to bring me to this podium tonight because I believe that's a remark that betrays an imperial view that has no place in representative democratic government, where public officials are the people's servants, not the other way around. Free and robust debate, a marketplace of ideas, is the oxygen of democratic government, and it includes private citizens who, out of conviction and a sense of duty, criticize their government. Our nation's founders understood this when they included as the First Amendment the constitutional prohibition against government infringing on free speech. Nobody likes to be criticized. I know I don't. But criticism comes with the job of being a public official. The healthy response for a functioning democracy, I believe, is one where the public servant curbs the desire to use his authority and power to squash criticism or dissent. Instead, he responds to the content of the criticism with documented facts and reasoned arguments. He avoids ad hominem attacks. It occurs to me that phrase might not mean something to people, so ad hominem attacks is where you attack the person rather than what the person says. He avoids ad hominem attacks and other rhetorical bullying devices. And I believe the public servant worthy of admiration is the one that meets this standard even though his critics may not. For I believe elected officials compared to an ordinary citizen bring into play the principle of noblesse oblige. With the power and authority comes with the privilege of elected office comes the obligation to meet the standard that I've just described. Everyone within the sound of my voice will decide for themselves the extent to which each individual sitting on the dais meets this standard, and more importantly, whether it's a standard to which they should be held. As for me, my formative years were the '30s and '40s, where I and those around me took it for granted that a core value of our society found expression in Voltaire's famous statement, "I disagree with everything you say, but I'll defend with my life your right to say it." I've never been able, nor do I want to shake that core value.
Well, I'll say, Mr. Zavos, I did not use your name purposely. I did not use your name. Ah, 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 you're done. I purposely did not use your name. Over 17 years, I've been accused of everything under the sun, including my family attacked. And because I'm elected, I'm supposed to sit here and take every single thing. My family won't even watch council anymore. They can't take it. But I sit here, so you all have a right to say dirt about me, dirt about my wife, dirt about my children, and not you, others. You seem to think you have that right. Well, I have a right to defend myself. And if you don't like it, I'm sorry. I did not use your name. And I grew up during the 1940s. I got the same kind of education you did in this very city. So, don't come in sanctimonious, "I offended you." Boy, I've had it too.
Thank you.
Oh, yes, you did. You got up. I was the one person out of 194,000 did it. How dare you? Come on. I wasn't born yesterday. Margaret Hammond, please.
Your honor, members of the city council, staff, and members of the audience, my name is Margaret Hammond. You know, in the long run, I think that I always try to remember that, I guess I knew all of you before you were on the city council, and we were friends, we attended many parties and get-togethers, so I think we need to remember that.
See you at the papers.
One who insult our friends or hurt their feelings or their family's feelings.
I'll see you at the papers. I'll see you at the patrons' club.
Thank you. But at any rate, I do want to go back to the bulky item pickup, which is 818-548-3916. With it being the beginning and the end of the month and the beginning of the month, there's tons of junk out on the streets, the right-ofways, from the people moving and dumping. So, I hope we have people calling in to get rid of the trash that we don't want to end up being a slum city. No one is a slum city. Now, my beef again is I'm back to the bag situation. This is a bag that I was given from, well, as a matter of fact, C V, a drugstore, no handles on it, and of course, I had forgot my bags, and it was too far for me to go out and get my bag from the car. And how was I to carry it out? It was full to the brim and whatnot. Well, they, at C V, they have a lodge now. Well, they, at C V, they have allowed you now to take shopping carts out, which they didn't. Well, the only trouble with that, and I'm back to, I was a great one to have the shopping cart ordinance passed, which I thank you very much. It was a wonderful thing that we did, and many other cities in the country keep asking us how we got it done. The only thing is, they end up, C V's over at Ross's and all this type of thing, I guess the enforcement, it's hard to enforce, but it really, we really need to keep enforcing those rules, those ordinances. Otherwise, people think they're getting away with something, and they'll keep taking them and dumping them all over the city. And I do think that would be too bad, because we don't want it to affect our quality of life. And I do think also, enforcement of the rules on the books helps us enjoy the city Glendale's quality of life. And the, and of course, the aggressively, bad driving, and poor pedestrian habits do not help our quality of life, because it leads to more injuries and fatalities, because it's, they're not respecting each other, we're not respecting each other as friends and residents of the same city. That's my feeling on that. Now, my other thing is, I'm really concerned on the Verdugo wash. Just remember enlarging the, or taking out cement walls from the Verdugo wash and so forth. I thought about that, well, that's pretty good. And then I thought about, who wants to have what happened when the flood came from Montrose down into Glendale? I can remember Dory Biggs, and I know, I don't know how many of you knew her, talking to me and saying, she and her mother were at a movie theater on Brandon Broadway, they couldn't get home to Adam's Hill. They had to take, go to a friend's house that was closer because of the floods. Now imagine that, that's how bad Glendale was, we know, we see pictures of it. So maybe we really ought to think about whether we want to do away with that wash. We could get another big flood one of these days, and particularly since we're still waiting on the reforestation of our, after the big fires. And we certainly wouldn't want to go through another flood like that, not with the population that we have today. We'd suffer a lot of losses, I'm sure. Anyway, that's what I have to say, and thank you very much. But I do think if we try to remember that we are, we see each other, and we need to be kind of nice to each other, really, I think that's a way to live. Especially for me, I mean, you get, I'm getting on in life, I'm not giving up, I'm going to keep fighting, but I think we need to remember how lucky we are to live in the city of Glendale. Thank you very, and the people who came to our historic tour were from Redondo Beach, from Long Beach, from Santa Rosa, they were down, I don't know who was the furthest away, Santa Monica, all over. And the one thing they said was, this is a really, a lovely city, and a lovely, that area, although it's not up in the hills and all that, very nice residential area, and the people really enjoyed the tour. They all raved about it because it had a nice neighborly feeling about it. Thank you very much.
My last speaker, is it Tamara?
Yes.
Yes. You come up, give your whole name for the record, I can't, I can't pronounce it.
My Armenian names are not easy to pronounce. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, respectful council members, and all staff members, and the audience, people who attend this meeting. I wanted to share this information with the city manager, Mr. Kasakhyan, the mayor, and city attorney, has this information. I made duplicate copies, and would appreciate your time, attention to read this. Mr. Kasakhyan? Although I can speak in English, I have no problem in communicating in English as well as in a few other languages. However, my community members asked me to speak today in Armenian, having greater community in the city of Glendale and surrounding areas, and considering the facts that unfortunately some people, especially senior community members, might have language barriers which will prevent them from understanding what's the major concern that brought me up here. So, I would appreciate your consideration at this time, and would like to share briefly my concerns in Armenian. Although my speech will be spread as a journalist that I intend to do, my speech will be spread worldwide, starting from YouTube, including the global media outlets, that I have full privilege in using proper channels. Okay. I'm here. Yes, this is my name, Harco, for my video, my name is Vena Sverle, November, Sanina, your cause are tested, make it work on in Glendale City. We're a man, your cool heart, so we, we're a much, I can't go, but we're Glendale City head. Yeah, for me, can I come, but okay, think, yes, I'm some, in, so let's go, let's start so, so no, no, so, and then, and then, Glendale City, but, so, so, I'm, I'm, you, you, you can, I can, I'm, 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 she would simply give up, or just back up from her complaints. We're Sam's, we're, they know, let her, I'm, 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 I'm,[1752.13]